A protest from Mickey. It appears he has taken care of this Zermotion.
Jerome Melton, Paul.
Item B protest. Item C protest from Michael Reed, 4728 Ames Avenue.
Paul, Palermo.
Yes.
Motion path seven to zero.
Item D protest from Janet McDonald.
Jerome Melton, Paul, Palermo.
Yep.
Zero.
Item E protest from Brian Faulkner, 5604 Hart. Roll call.
Gray, Harding.
Item F protest. Item G protest. Roll call. From Donovan Osmore, 3502 North. Roll call.
Gray.
Make recommendations.
It's very difficult.
Oh, is there anyone else here for Weeds Group 2020-01? Ed. Roll call. Roll call.
Gray.
Ton of notes to everyone coming in now, we're finishing up the Board of Eake. We've got one more group to go, so bear with us. Little group number. Item C protest from.
Brown.
Item C protest from. Yes.
Motion path seven to zero.
Item D protest from. Roll call.
Gray, Harding.
Kami Hertz, 2718 North, 118th Street. Go once. Roll call.
Gray, Harding. Palermo.
I'm going to have protest from Lily Richardson Severn, 4726 North. Oh, sorry about that. Is there anyone else here for little group number 2020-02? See no one? Roll call.
Gray, Harding, Jerem, Melton, Paul, Festerson.
Yep.
Palermo.
Yes.
Motion path seven to zero.
No, we did recommendation. This is a resolution.
Roll call.
Gray, Harding, Jerem.
Yes.
Melton, Paul, Festerson.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Motion path seven to zero.
Motion, turn. Board of Equalization.
Roll call.
Gray, Harding, Jerem.
Yes.
Melton, Paul, Festerson.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Motion path seven to zero.
For those here for the City Council, we'll be in recess for five minutes and we'll come back and start the City Council meeting. Okay, council members, if we can come on down, we'll get started here. We'd ask that you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance remain. Oh, we'll do roll call first.
Gray.
Here.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Here, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing for remarks delivered today by Councilmember Ben Gray.
Let the pledge of allegiance by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I wanted to take the opportunity, first of all, to thank our Vice President for giving me the opportunity to talk here just briefly today. And I'm not going to keep everybody long, but I could tell you a long story about a gentleman named Rudy Smith who passed away last week. Rudy Smith was a World Herald reporter. He was also, he and I also, for people who may not know, when I first started at Channel 7, he and I were two of the photographers who shot most of the Nebraska football games for about the first 12 years that I was on the City Council. So, I mean, that I was on, working at Channel 7. He passed away. Rudy has over 1,500 pictures. He started in about 1963. He has pictures of Dr. Martin Luther King's visit here. He has pictures of Bobby Kennedy's visit here. He has a number of other pictures and they will be coming out in a pictorial book at some point in time. But Rudy was one of those individuals who was strongly committed to maintaining the history of this community and the history of the African-American community to the extent that he has all of those pictures. And he stayed a fervent member of the Black Museum Board. So with that, I'm not going to take any further time, but I just wanted us to take a minute to remember a really good person and a really great individual in our community in Rudy Smith. And I thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
An affidavit of publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the East Wall of the Legislative Chambers.
Welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. We thank you for joining us here today. As a courtesy to those in attendance and to facilitate the conduct of the people's business, we ask that you turn off or silence all electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Items 6 to 10 can be considered together for Pacific Grove located at 1018 South 90th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items 6 and 7 are ordinances to rezone this property from R2 District to R4 District and DR District. Item 8, an ordinance to approve a PUR overlay district in an R4 District and DR District and to approve the development plan. B is amendment of the whole requested by the Planning Department. Item 9, a resolution to approve the final plat for Pacific Grove. Item 10, a resolution to approve the Pacific Grove subdivision agreement. And just a note with an amendment of the whole for item 8, it would be best to take a separate vote on that item.
The public hearing on items 6 through 10 begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Name is Kyle Hazi with ENA Consulting Group representing the applicant. The piece of property that we are discussing this afternoon is located just to the northwest corner of 90th and Pacific as shown on the site plan here. It is 1.3 acre site. The aerial shows a home on that site. That home has since been demolished and the site is currently vacant. As mentioned, this property is zoned R2. The properties to the north, east and west are zoned R2 as well. The property to the south, there are some current apartments there and they are zoned R4. We're requesting that this property be rezoned to R4 with a PUR. Here is a depiction, a color exhibit showing the proposed seven new lots on the site. The project would have a one-way drive coming from the north, wrapping around and exiting again to the south. There would be kind of a nice courtyard feature in the middle, be well treed. It'd have some landscape pavers on both end trying to kind of bookend that interior space. Along with the road itself and the sidewalks, there is a community space within that area as well. That is proposed to be possibly a fire pit or a place for the community residents to gather and have some events and just socialize. There will be landscape screening. The applicant has contracted with Landha landscapes to do the landscaping as shown on the north, south and east and west sides. There will also be a six-foot privacy fence on the northeast or the north, the west and the south property lines. On the south property line, the privacy fence would go to the east side of the drive. And on the north property line, that privacy fence would extend to the front of that neighbor's residence as was requested by that residence. Then there will be also a water poly basin providing a buffer between those lots and 90th Street as well. These lots are arranged at about 50 foot wide and 130 feet deep is their typical depth. The prices of the homes are proposed to be somewhere between $650 and $800,000 for their sale value. And then I'll make myself available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Before we call other proponents, Mr. Hazi, do you have an explanation for your perspective on the need for the amendment of the whole?
The, trying to meet as far as the PUR, okay, the request for the PUR, the. Trying to meet, as far as the PUR, okay, the request for the PUR, the minimum lot width is 50 feet. What we are proposing is 49.5 feet, I think is what it is, so it's a half-foot variance for one of the lots on the east side here, and then the lot depth variance is between Pacific and the back of those lots. We are providing, it requires a 25-foot variant or 25-foot setback. We currently are at 22 feet. With that water poly basin in there, we are closer to about 65 feet from the back of the homes to the curb, so we are meeting, substantially, we are meeting those setback requirements.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. Kyle, I just had a quick question. I think there was, I think it's reflected in number eight, amendment of the whole B. There was some conversation with the abutting property owner about landscaping payment, or, and I think that's been removed at the request both of the abutting property owner and agreed to by the developer.
Developer and the property owner to north have agreed to a landscape allowance to provide to him to provide some extra screening within his property.
Okay, and that's, and to your satisfaction, that's reflected in, I think, amendment B then, right?
Yes.
Of number eight?
Correct.
All right.
What's the pleasure of the council?
We have to do different vote on number eight. We can do six, seven, nine, and 10 together, right, Madam Clerk?
Correct.
So I would suggest a motion on those first.
Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 11, an ordinance to rezone property located at 4628 Capitol Avenue from R4 35 District to R5 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item 12 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
I think just me. Ron Hackett, RGH Design, 3515 Oak Ridge Road, and I'm here just to tell you, we're looking for a simple zoning change to build a nice little infill project. Looking at a duplex of 2,000 square foot unit, fairly modern in design, and it's right there between the Med Center and Dundee, so I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 12, an ordinance to rezone property located at 1223 and 1231 at South 14th Street from GI District to CC District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item 13 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Hi, I am Jack Peels. I'm the architect, and Leah Thrasher, the business owner, is also here. The proposal is to rezone the site so that a dog park and, you know, space for dog owners to spend time could be submitted to the building department.
Thank you, and I'm sure you're happy to answer any questions.
Yes, and I'm happy to answer.
There you go. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 12, an ordinance to rezone property located at 4628 Capitol Avenue from R4 35 District to R5 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item 12 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
I think just me. Ron Hackett, RGH Design, 3515 Oak Ridge Road, and I'm here just to tell you, we're looking for a simple zoning change to build a nice little infill project. Looking at a duplex of 2,000 square foot unit, fairly modern in design, and it's right there between the Med Center and Dundee, so I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 13 is approved, seven to zero. Item 14, an ordinance to rezone the property located at 3116 North 16th Street from GC District to R7 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item 14 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 13 is approved, seven to zero. Item 14, an ordinance to rezone the property located at 3116 North 16th Street from GC District to R7 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item 13 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Hi, I am Jack Peels. I'm the architect, and Leah Thrasher, the business owner, is also here. The proposal is to rezone the site so that a dog park and, you know, space for dog owners to spend time could be submitted to the building department.
Thank you, and I'm sure you're happy to answer any questions.
Yes, and I'm happy to answer.
There you go. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 13 is approved, seven to zero. Item 14, an ordinance to rezone the property located at 3116 North 16th Street from GC District to R7 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item 14 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 14 is approved, seven to zero. Item 15, a resolution to approve the Benson Apartments Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 6152 Military Avenue in an amount up to $2,067,135. A is communication opposition.
The public hearing on item 15 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, good afternoon. Don Seaton, presenting on behalf of the City Planning Department. This is a new apartment project located at the corner of Military Road, the intersection Military Road and Northwest Radial Highway. New construction, four-story apartment building placed on top of one level of structured parking. Ninety-seven units total, 61 stalls in the structure, in the parking structure, with 11 developed on-street. Site is zoned NBD, which carries no requirement for onsite parking. The developer, Sage Capital LLC, Alan Moser and Colin Brown, managers. Total project cost is now approaching about $15 million. Let me show you the project. They are requesting $2,067,135 in TIF support. They're doing a fair amount of, considerable amount of work in the right-of-way with that intersection at Military Road and Northwest Radial Highway, but in addition to the public improvements in the right-of-way, they're also providing up to $10,000 for a kind of a business district entry sign. Project complies with the TIF requirements. It is in compliance with the city's master plan. We ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Don't worry, I'm not here about parking. Council President Jaram, members of the city council, Dr. Aaron Feigstinger, 2719 North 49th Avenue. I'm here as a resident of the Benson neighborhood in opposition, not so much to the project itself. I'm a huge fan of urban density, but to the $2 million in TIF being awarded to it. In order to receive a TIF award, the project must be located in a blighted community redevelopment area, and the community development law governing TIF defines blight in several ways, two of which are, one, unemployment in the designated area is at least 120% of the state or national average, and, two, the per capita income of the area is lower than the average per capita income of the city or village in which the area is designated. To me, what this sounds like is an area where a substantial amount of people living in our neighborhood could use some help. It sounds to me like we could spend our time and energy and resources to help stabilize the neighborhood and my neighbors who call it home. But in this instance, and indeed in the vast majority of residential TIF projects in Omaha, we seem to have decided that in order to solve the problem of blight, we need to change the character of the neighborhood and change the character of my neighbors, to attract a new type of person to live in a place like Benson, someone who can afford to pay $840 a month for a studio at 62nd and Military, because the people who cannot afford this might be part of the problem, part of the blight. A few weeks ago, Councilman Festerson in his remarks mentioned that he was a history buff. So I am too, so much so that I completed a PhD in urban history, so I can say with some authority that historically, the designation of blight while describing the character of a neighborhood has also been used as a commentary on the morals and capabilities of the people living in that neighborhood. This has led to slum clearance, displacement, segregation, redlining, and increasing housing inequality, and please understand that I am not accusing anyone in this city of pursuing these ends, but it can happen if we're not careful and if we're not thinking critically about how we're using tools like TIF. So I just want to share a few numbers. This is all publicly available information on the community development website. In 2017, TIF awards helped build 1,582 residential units. 150 of those were accessible to low-income households. In 2018, TIF helped build 660 units, 48 of which were available to low-income households. In 2019, the report isn't out yet, but I have all the time in the world, that's not actually true, but I went through all your council agendas for you, and found that this year, over 32 million will be awarded in TIF to help build 1,123 residential units, 150 of which will be accessible to low-income households. 60 of those will be restricted to low-income seniors over at the Highlander, 60 of them will be restricted to low-income veterans, which I believe at the Victory, and then you have agenda item 17, which will build 30 more. That's 32 million in residential TIF, with only a little over $800,000 of that being devoted to help expand quality, affordable housing choices in our city. I know that TIF is not free money awarded to developers. It is a highly effective tool that our city should be using to spur development that would otherwise not be economically feasible in areas that we have decided need assistance to alleviate substandard conditions. I also know that we do not have nearly enough quality, affordable housing in our city to meet the ever-growing demand for said units. 3,000 people applied this year for housing assistance from OHA, and they still had hundreds on their waiting list from last year. That should show that we have a problem, we have a need.
That should show that we have a problem, we have a need. Four hundred people make contact with the homeless service system every month with some aspect of it. So TIF, if TIF is an effective tool to address the problems of blight, of unemployment, of inaccessibility, and poverty, then we should be using it to address those needs in a way that is equitable and accessible to those living in these areas, not to help build ninety-seven luxury studios, one-bedroom and two-bedroom units. I know this project and its requested TIF will be approved today, so I ask that we, as a city, spend some time doing some real soul-searching for future TIF projects and awards, to stop and think critically whether our use of TIF is leading to increased equality in these neighborhoods, and question whether we are using all the tools in our toolkit in making our unique and diverse neighborhoods accessible to those who live there and in turn, our city a fairer and more equitable place to live. And I'm happy to answer any questions, so long as they're not about parking.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'm supportive of this, and this is, as Mr. Beller stated, the, really the second approval coming to the city council. There's more to come in January, February, when we talk about redevelopment agreement and final plat, which gets into even more detail than we have today. But I would just remark that this is consistent with the Benson's master plan, not just the city's master plan, but Benson's master plan that we adopted many years ago, as is the TIF district, and it is qualified for TIF, which was established at the same time, that applies to essentially the same boundaries of the business district itself. So it is a fifteen million dollar reinvestment in Benson, and ninety-seven new apartments on a property that has been vacant for a long, long time. And the TIF component of this does pay for public improvements that otherwise would not be occurring with sidewalks and landscaping and the signage that Mr. Beller mentioned that are very important to a business district like Benson, regardless of your income level or your housing opportunity. And I would agree that housing is important, a mixture of housing is important, and that's why Benson is so special, has all these different offerings, a range of offerings for folks that want to live there and be there, and that's really one of its strengths. Just down the street is a much larger residential opportunity, which is Benson Tower from Omaha Housing Authority. Mr. Beller, a couple of questions for you on the details here. And I appreciate you working with me on, in the Benson Business Improvement District, on these items, which is the sign, which I think is, will be included in the final agreement and has been agreed to, in landscaping, in the sidewalks, and we talked about traffic flow and the alteration of the intersection there last time. So the one remaining point they're concerned about is the parking. And as was talked about today, sixty-one internal stalls, and I appreciate you now maximizing the on-street there, which makes it eleven.
Correct.
On-street. So we're making progress in that respect. And you're correct, the NBD does not require a one-to-one, but I think when we have a residential use like this, it is important to try to get as close as we can to accommodate that number, realizing that is an overall item of interest in Benson, given the success we've had there and the popularity of it. And I do appreciate also the bus and bike opportunities you're discussing, because that's an important part of this mix too, and we want to have those opportunities for transit to Benson residents. The one remaining component then would be the discussion over potential lease nearby to accommodate the possibility of getting closer to one-to-one. And I think what you're telling us today is that's something you're still working on and may have more results by January, February, when we have the final agreement, correct?
That's right. Brent Beller, 1140 West Center Road. We have some opportunities to pursue some, what I'll call, long-term lease arrangements. But we've discussed, I mean, the reality is, is a lot of folks in Benson know that it's a hotspot here in Omaha. A lot of those folks don't necessarily want to tie up their property with a long-term lease for parking. The other thing is, they don't want to see their buildings torn down. So we're continuing to work on that. Don't necessarily, we have nothing, like I said, nothing in commitment today. I hope that the next time we're in front of you, if this board approves, we have some sort of formality on all of this, so that folks can be comfortable as far as parking goes.
Great. I know you're working on that, and there are some viable opportunities right nearby that I think would be appropriate in this instance, while not maintaining or not taking up what is valuable property there for further housing opportunities or for mixed-use development or whatever it may be. I'd also mention, which I did discuss with you this morning, that I did meet with Ken Smith, the Public Works representative at the city, who is our parking specialist throughout the city and analyzes these issues throughout the city. And I have him now working at Benson, on Benson itself, to come up with some analysis and some opportunities for us, should things continue the way that they're going. I call this the second wave of development in Benson, really, not just your project, but two or three others that are happening now or that have now inquired, and I think could also be very positive for the area, as long as we can accommodate them from an infrastructure perspective. So we hope to have some results with him in the next month or two.
Okay.
And working together with Benson Business Improvement District itself. And it could be things like just doing it more efficiently than we do, or it could be things like using the lot more efficiently that is currently managed by the BID but owned by the city, or there's a library parking lot there, too, that might be a point of discussion in that analysis. So really, it's an opportunity to use, I think, what we currently have in a more efficient way, but making sure we're accommodating everybody to accommodate the success we've had there. So I wanted to put that out there, too, so that you know we're working on the bigger picture as well.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Melton.
Yes, thank you. And I was also, I just noted, eleven of the units are two bedrooms as well. So technically, I mean, you've got a hundred and eight bedrooms that are going to be inside this building, so.
Right.
So I want to say, you know, I love the building, love the area, I think it's great, but the parking is bad there. I mean, it's hard to find parking when you want to go there and you just want to have dinner.
There's no denying.
So I know, and I think Councilman Festerson covered it, but I just wanted you to know that I'm very concerned about the parking issue and the fact that it's in an NBD and to say, well, it's not actually required by the city. So it's just kind of like, well, let's just ignore the parking issue. But we really can't. And I understand the BID's concern, because Benson is, I think, it's growing, it's, people are wanting to go there. There could come a point, though, where, you know, I want to go out to dinner and somebody mentions Benson, and I go, no, I can't deal with the parking there, right? And it's going to start affecting all of those businesses. So it could be a domino effect that is the result of, kind of, you know, you broke the back of that parking issue, and I don't want to see that. So it's not that I don't support your project, but if we're going to be approving TIF funds, then I do think it may not be something in the TIF overview. I don't expect the TIF committee necessarily to make a justification, but I have to tell you, moving forward on the project, I'm reluctant to approve it until we have some assurance that there's going to be parking.
So a couple, I mean, there's a lot to unpack in that question, because, number one, it's not just this development that's causing the parking issues in Benson. There is an issue in Benson, no matter what. It is an urban, small core.
Right. But it's already there, and you haven't built yet.
But it's there.
Right.
So then the question is, all right, one of the policies behind TIF is you can't use TIF dollars for private parking garages. Well, private parking garages cost twenty thousand dollars a stall. That's one of the lower ends that I've seen. So if you allow TIF for private parking garages, well, that's one way to offset the issue that you're talking about. But as we sit today, the city's policy is, we don't do that, and everyone plays by that rule. However, we're trying as best we can, but there's just not a lot of real estate to go find to do more parking. And as soon as we go tear down an old building and have service parking there, and we're seeing it in other little districts in Omaha, and we charge ten dollars a stall to park there, whether you're there for an hour or ten hours, there's going to be pushback on that as well. So it's a slippery slope that I think all developers are probably trying to, and it's not just Benson. If you look at Blackstone, if you look at the other areas, South Tenth Street, they're all having this issue. And it puts you all in a tough position. I understand that, because you're weighing the benefits of surface parking or business. And so I appreciate Councilman Festerman talking to Mr. Simpson or Ken about it, just because clearly, we need something more, in my opinion, more long-term in Benson. How we afford that, how the city affords it, I don't know, but certainly, that's something that needs to be done in Benson.
Well, I agree, anywhere, because you're going to get to a tipping point.
Absolutely.
Right? It's doing great, but that we could, that last project that kind of takes it over could hurt the rest of the business district.
And it's not as though, if we're not here on this particular site, somebody else is going to be before you, because it's a site that needs to be redeveloped. But I know there's other projects coming down the pipeline in Benson. Is the policy always going to be a one-to-one? Because if so, that's also going to stifle development. And how do you encourage development when you have an NBD zoning, but then the policy's going to be, we're doing a one-to-one? So it, this is the issue I think we're all trying to fight, and I don't know the right answer to it. All I know is we're trying to do our best efforts.
Right.
By minimizing getting as close as we can to the one-to-one. And I know, you're right, there is actually two bedrooms.
Yeah, I'm just saying that there's going to be more people. I mean, you're looking at a potential, or more, but if you think one person per bedroom even.
Right.
You're looking at a hundred and eight people, so, who are, and maybe not all of them are going to have cars, but certainly more than seventy-two.
Well, with the amount of money that we're trying to put in our public infrastructure, public transportation here in the city, we hope that some of them utilize some of those dollars that we're putting into public transportation.
All right. Just, it's something that I, but for you, even to make sure that you have parking, or else you're not going to be able to rent your apartments either.
One hundred and ten percent agree.
Right.
And that's why, I mean, we're working, it's an issue.
Okay.
That we're working on, and my word to you all is, hopefully, we have some formal solution to get us some additional parking. I'm not saying we're going to get one-to-one. I'm not. I'm saying we're going to continue to work on it, so that the next time.
That's what I wanted to hear, because I don't, initially, I don't think I heard that. I just heard you kind of saying that, hey, your master plan says I don't need it, so I don't, you really, I wanted some assurances from you that regardless of that, parking's an issue, and I want to make sure that you're working on getting as many parking spaces as you can in addition to what you have.
Yes. That is what we're doing, and that's why I'm saying, I hope that we have something formal, and if this is approved today, that we have something more formal the next time we're in front of you all, that shows, all right, here's what we did, this is the best we can do, considering the circumstances of the area surrounding our development, which is Benson.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Melton. Councilmember Harding.
Mr. President. Brent, just a couple of things. One, I too was going to bring something up about marketability, but I'll do it maybe from a little different perspective than Councilmember Melton, and that's more from the developer's side, is that obviously, if, you know, they're at risk in their investment in the project, if, you know, if they can't, if their clientele is demanding, you know, it's one stall per door, and it's not being provided, then the market's going to dictate whether or not that project is successful, and that's at the risk of the developer.
That's right.
And now, having said that, I'll go, now, I appreciate the efforts that are being made to accommodate as much parking as you can, in conjunction with also relying on some of the public investment and infrastructure for mass transit. One point of clarification I was hoping you could help me with, the site plan that was included with the information actually says that there are sixty-seven stalls being provided, but I keep hearing sixty-one, so.
It's, there may have been a redesign from which, from when we initially submitted our TIF application and the site plan that was associated with that, and maybe that's in your package to where we sit today. Part of it, what's happened is, there's a PUR, so next time we're down here with the final plat, the PUR, we have some foundational polls that come down into the parking area, which is what we need a waiver as far as the PUR, because you can't have podiums within the parking. I think the way those have laid out, as far as the design, not an architect, I'll defer to HBA, but as I understand it, some of those parking stalls had to go away just based on design.
As you were saying that, Mr. Seaton was also shaking and said that, yeah. So I just wanted to understand what the discrepancy was.
Yep.
With the provided site plan versus what you were saying.
I'll take the seventy-seven, though, if that's.
Well, sixty-seven, not seventy-seven.
Well, plus the eleven.
Anyway. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Councilmember Harding. I would just add a few comments, that many of these things that we've been talking about, including the people who testified at the public hearing, both in favor and opposition, are all interconnected, because to promote mass transit in our city and alternative forms of transportation, we need high-density development to do that. We need high-density development to keep the price of the property taxes that people pay affordable in the city and to promote and encourage development in the urban core. We have NBD, we have CBD, which are two tools to promote the high-density development. And this council, by unanimous vote, passed a resolution over two years ago that encouraged the planning department to relax the parking restrictions or regulations, whatever you want to call them, for high-density infill developments along mass transit routes in our city. The thing called the Bus Rapid Transit, however, has kind of consumed the limited resources and staff in the planning department to focus on that, and we are getting to transit-oriented development standards that are coming, at least along the Dodge Street corridor, but we have lots more work to do. But keep in mind, please, in your perspectives, that if we're going to require NBD and CBD developments to install parking garages, that it further compounds the affordable housing crisis, because one-point-two million or whatever it is on this project alone, where the law does not require parking, then drives the cost of those square-foot rents up per unit, which then drives the affordability higher and out of the reach of so many more people. So these things are all interconnected, as I see it. And when we have a prime mass transit zone, as this one is, with NBD zoning, with all due respect to my friends in Benson that deal with the parking issues, to me, this is exactly the sort of site where we need high-density development, exactly the sort of site where we should be encouraging mixed affordability in terms of the units, but because of the practical requirements of people insisting upon installing parking that's going to cause the project to go up by one-point-two million, even though it's right on a mass transit route, we're discouraging the use of mass transit even further. We're discouraging development of affordable housing. We're encouraging more people to drive their cars, and when your commutes get longer, and I hear it every day from people about the pressure in the city streets for congestion getting worse and worse and worse, don't scratch your heads on why that's happening. It's because we are a car-centric city, and we continue to have policies that promote those, and we're not even relaxing them along mass transit routes. To me, that doesn't make any sense, and it really compounds the problem in developing affordable housing. Councilmember Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President, and thanks for those remarks, and I agree with that. This is a good conversation to be having, because these are important issues, as we talk about them throughout the city, and we do support TIF for housing projects and affordable housing projects, because that is an important aspect of what we're trying to accomplish as a city. One last word in respect of this project. So we did discuss the parking and how you're handling it in terms of the overall project costs, as we try to get closer to one-to-one. But it's also true that if a resident wanted to come and rent one of your units, they are not charged for parking, it's not absorbed, these additional spots, into your cost of your project. A resident would be charged a fee to park. So where I'm going with that is, if you don't have a car or don't want to have a car, you are not charged for parking, and your rent is that much less.
That's correct.
So I think that's a positive aspect to point out to.
Right.
All right. Thank you. And with that, I know we have the redevelopment agreement coming later, January, February, so this is just the next step in the process, but look forward to keep working with you on it, and would motion to approve today.
Second, roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Pauls.
Yes.
Clermell.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item fifteen is approved, seven to zero. Item sixteen, a resolution to approve the Hub fourteen-oh-one Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at fourteen-zero-one Jones Street in an amount up to eight-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars.
The public hearing on item sixteen begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes. Good afternoon. Don Seaton, on behalf of the Omaha City Planning Department. We'll, for this site, go downtown at the corner, southwest corner of Fourteenth and Jones, just a little bit west of the Old Market area. The project involves a two-story historic brick building, built in nineteen-twelve. It's currently vacant and currently in rather poor condition. The developer is White Lotus Group, Haroon Agarwal, manager. Just a quick aside, if you haven't been up by Ames Plaza, they recently completed a TIF project up in that area, the falling-down bowling alley, and they've really done a very nice job with that one. Just kind of an aside, anyway. White Lotus Group, Haroon Agarwal, they will be using Historic Preservation Income Tax credits for this project, so they'll be restoring the building very nicely to its original appearance. Got a couple of renderings. It's about a forty-three-thousand-square-foot building. It'll be a mixed-use office-commercial center, kind of an innovation. It'll be a mixed-use office-commercial center, kind of an innovation center where the office spaces will have shared amenities. There'll be a rooftop patio. This view is from the, well, it's looking to the southwest. This will be looking from the other direction, kind of to the northwest. You see the rooftop patio, and a coffee shop or beanery. Total project cost, $7,332,000. The TIF request is $836,191,000. It's been reviewed by the TIF Committee and the Planning Board and approved by both. It meets the criteria of our TIF program, is consistent with the city's master plan. They will be rezoning to Central Business District and are in that process, and we ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Good afternoon. Jay Klein, 1040 Essex Court, and I represent White Lotus Group, the developer, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palms.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Harding. Councilmember Harding passed due to a potential conflict of interest. Item 16 is approved, six to zero. Item 17, a resolution to approve the Garage Lofts Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 424 South 24th Street in an amount up to $230,000.
The public hearing on item 17 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City Planning. I just want to say I do appreciate everyone's comments regarding item 15 as it relates to the affordability, the interconnectedness of affordability, and the achievements or goals of the master plan in transportation and TIF. It is a tricky thing to figure out, but we do appreciate your support. So Garage Lofts is a TIF redevelopment project plan proposed at this site that you see shaded in blue. So this is South 24th Street, South 24th Avenue, and this is Harney Street, and this is going north. The developer is Arch Icon Development, who is here with me. They have developed other projects in this area. Just a little north of here is the junction at 24th, South 24th and Farnham Street, and then they were also the developer for the flats on Howard, which is in this general area. That was a historic preservation, major historic preservation project, so very significant. So they are familiar with this area, and this time they're bringing to us an affordable housing project. What they propose to do is take a site that's been vacant for about a year and a half and tear down the buildings that are there and build new a three-story structure with 30 apartment units that are three and four bedrooms. Really significant, because we have not seen a project like this that brings three and four bedrooms. For sure in the downtown area, but I would even say maybe not even the urban core, so it's really exciting. This is for low-income housing families. They are using low-income housing tax credits to construct this particular project. It will also involve some surface parking on this side, the entrance to the surface parking will be on this side for 30 stalls. This is a rendering of the site from South 24th Street, and this is looking from South 24th Avenue on the west side. The project does propose about $230,000 in TIF. That represents about 3.8% of the funding source or capital stack. This does involve an investment of just over $6 million in this area. This project does also propose some, a dedication of right-of-way, if I go back to the aerial, dedication of right-of-way on both sides, the east and west of the property, to allow for proper alignment and installation of sidewalks. There will also be an addition of some parking on street that the project does propose. The project does actually have about $949,000, a little over $949,000 in TIF eligible costs, but due to the low amount of the TIF, which is $230,000, TIF will be only allocated to the public improvement funds, or excuse me, public improvement costs and the site work related to this project. With that, I would ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Good afternoon. Darren Smith, Arch Icon Development, 509 Walker Woodbine, Iowa, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palms.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 18 is approved, seven to zero. Item 19, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow daycare services in the R435 district located at 5815 and 5819 South 14th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item 18 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palms.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 18 is approved, seven to zero. Item 19, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow auto sales in the CC District located at 13704 P Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item eight, or excuse me, 19 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palms.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 19 is approved, seven to zero. Item 20, an application to consider a class C liquor license for Fantan Club located at 5915 Center Street.
This has been laid over from the November 26 council meeting, and the public hearing was continued to this hearing here today, so we'll open it up for any proponents.
Good afternoon. Heather Horse, Walls Law Office, 6519 Sunshine Drive. I'm here with the applicant, Kristi Joseph, the new owner of the Fantan Club. With respect to two weeks ago, we did reach an agreement with the City of Omaha Finance Department regarding payment of the back restaurant taxes that the predecessor owed. So here's a copy here on the overhead of that agreement and a cashier's check that we paid to them before this meeting. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. We are asking for approval of the liquor license.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Yes. Yes. Kristi Joseph, 3145 South 18th Street.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. I made some comments about this pre-council today. I think it's, I don't agree with the payment plan that the Finance Department and you have worked out. This is money that has been collected already and owed to the city, and to pay, if it's, I think the estimate is $10,000 to pay $3,000 down in 28 payments, so two and a half years of $250 a month, I'm not in agreement with. I think the whole amount should be paid before we approve this, and that's my position.
Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm just going to be brief. I know there was one, my understanding is that there was one citation for serving to a minor?
Yes.
Okay. Can you explain what that was, what that was about?
And before you do, you have to say your name again, so the record knows who's speaking.
Okay. Kristi Joseph. It was an employee that was presented with a vertical license, and she accepted it. And she's, we have a zero-tolerance policy, she was terminated, and it's a one-time thing. We are, we have everybody signed up for the Safe Serve Online Program for alcohol, so everybody's up to date with everything.
Okay. I just, just to finish up very quickly, in terms of serving to minors, that's a pretty major offense for me specifically. In my judgment, once is a, is an accident, two or more times is a mistake, and that's going to, that's going to, I'm not going to be supportive if there are continued violations of that sort. So I just wanted you to know that. I have concerns too about, with Councilmember Harding about the payment plan. I'm willing to go forward with this one, but we've got to really seriously take a look at that, because we are, I agree with Mr. Harding, we're not a bank. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions myself. One is that I was informed by City Law Department that your grandmother, who was the licensee, Lorna Brooks, who was a good person, except apparently in her illness, did not see fit to remit the taxes she was collecting for whatever reasons. And, but that's one thing. The second thing is, is that I understand that she passed away about a year ago. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. So how has, if the licensee who owned the business passed away a year ago, how is it that you've been operating without even a temporary operator's permit in that time period?
Yes, Mr. Jerome, we did.
You have to say your name for the record.
Yes. Heather Horse from Walls Office, 6519 Sunshine Drive. We did receive a temporary operating permit, and there is a probate case open under the estate of Lorna Brooks. And we've been, we were advised by Lincoln and the City of Omaha that we had to open the probate to operate under the estate of Lorna Brooks. And part of that, we decided to transition the ownership, and that's why we're here today.
Okay. So that's one question. The second question I have for you, Ms. Joseph, is have you been operating the establishment since December of last year, when your grandmother passed away?
Yes, my mother and I, but I bought it. She was the representative of the will of her estate, and so it was transferred to the representative of the state. So that was her, and I have since bought it and taken over.
All right. When did you take over?
When did I take over? It's been such an ordeal with everything. I think it was April. I think it was April.
Sales should be attached to the liquor license application.
So why is it that if you took over from, and the research I've done through people who know your grandmother, was that she was very ill at the end? Doesn't excuse the corporation not having paid the tax. Your mother's not a liquor license operator, right? She's just, your grandmother's personal representative in her estate, right?
Correct.
But what's your excuse for not paying, but collecting the?
I had no idea this was even a thing until the day of our, our, November 26th, our initial meeting here, but I wasn't aware of it before that.
Like Councilmember Harding, I have really very little tolerance for businesses that are collecting tax from patrons and then pocketing tax rather than remitting it. I'm glad to see that you're making arrangements to pay the arrears back, and Ms. Waller from the City Finance Department made it a personal point to come up to me before the meeting to assure me that she had received a cashier's check from you today to do that. And so, having not heretofore announced my own personal position, I think it would be unfair to you today to announce a new one today to say, I'm not voting for these anymore, the people who are collecting this tax and not remitting it to the city, but I'm going to, I feel like I could take a chance on you to, that you would follow the rules, knowing that this for you personally is a lesson learned, but, you know, you have a lawyer standing next to you, and, you know, they take a little bit of money, but they can provide you a heck of a lot of information about how you stay out of trouble, right?
Absolutely.
And it's a lot cheaper to do it prospectively than it is retroactively.
Right.
And so I want to know what your assurances are, at least for my vote. I don't know what anyone else is going to do, and I can't make a motion sitting here in this position that I am as president, and somebody else has to make the motion. But what assurances do you have that you will be following the laws and working with your attorney to make sure that you do comply with the liquor laws? Not just sales tax, restaurant tax, tobacco tax, but sales to people who are old enough to purchase, making sure people aren't getting intoxicated and being overserved and things like that.
Could be on the spot there. I, I've, I don't plan on doing anything wrong. If I thought I was, I definitely wouldn't take this on. I'm very hopeful that I can take what has been kind of smashed into the ground as far as our business has gone and bring it back to where it was when, I remember her, you know, first purchasing it. It was a wonderful business. I've grown up there. I just want it back to where, where it was when she first started it.
So one of the final areas that I want to ask you about is, it's a package license, and so people can purchase containers to go. And one of the things that I noticed as I volunteer to help maintain the athletic fields for a local church that's to the rear of your business, that there are people who come out of your business that have package, and then they sit on the bleachers at the ball field, and then they drink the beverage, and then they throw the beverage down below the bleachers. Other people who come out and drink in the little lot or along Dupont, then toss the stuff out of the car windows, and then people like me who are mowing have glass break when the mower goes over, which is not fun, by the way.
No.
Or when they're running the weed trimmer along the fence line, or having to pick up all your garbage from your business, and that isn't fun. And so, one of the things that businesses who sell liquor don't understand, but need to be reminded, is that there's a liquor rule that places on the licensee the burden to maintain the, and be responsible for outdoor adjacent related areas. And so, when there is all this trash, and I know there's the turf that's on the west side of 60th, but, you know, that's a, that's a big burden most of the day to get across 60th Street with four lanes to come over there to come to Dupont. Same with the Buc-E's. But by personal observation, I could say there have been people that I've seen that have come from your business, that have done the things that I've shared with you. So what can you tell me about having staff who will pick up trash, the liquor, the bottles to the south of your business?
Okay. I wasn't aware that it went as far back as that, but I personally go and check after our busy nights, not necessarily our slow nights, but I can definitely make that a priority. I scan, there is an Omaha Car Care that's right behind us that a lot of times they'll allow us to use their parking lot, and I always check, you know, around there that we're not littering, or my customers aren't littering, and I pick it up. I will definitely make it a point to go further back. I didn't know that that was even, I didn't know about that. I wasn't aware of it going as far back as the bleachers and the field back there. But, yeah, I will definitely make that a point.
Thank you. Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just as a suggestion, I talked to the, just talked to our chair, the Liquor Committee or the Law Committee, and my suggestion would be maybe a three-month review with Finance to make sure that they're continuing to pay, and a six-month review of the establishment itself.
So are you making a motion to approve subject to those conditions?
Yes.
All right.
I'll make that a motion.
Was that your second?
That was my second.
Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve subject to three-month review for compliance as to the tax payment and six-month review for general compliance No further lights, roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to one.
So, you, you were recommending approval to the Liquor Commission, but it'll be subject to you, if approved by the Liquor Commission, of coming back to the city's law department, which you'd get a letter from the city clerk at the address you provided, an email, so make sure it's accurate.
Sure.
And then again, it's three months after that, so six months.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Item twenty-one, an application to consider a Class Z liquor license for Elvas located at 1714 Vinton Street.
The public hearing on item twenty-one begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, thanks for your time. I'm here for a liquor license, Elvas LLC. It's gonna be an art gallery with option for dessert and wine, so if you have any questions, just let me know.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
[inaudible]
Oh, I'm sorry. Would you please tell us your name and address for the record?
Yeah, Jorge Ornella's seventeen fourteen Vinton Street.
Thank you. Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember, Vice President Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will say I was eating breakfast at my absolute favorite spot last week, and somebody had come up to me and said they had no opposition. I actually encouraged approving this for you. So, when Louie M. says it's okay, then I'm gonna go with that. So, motion approved.
Roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-one is approved, seven to zero. Item twenty-two, an application to consider a Class Z liquor license for Trukett, Omaha, located at 5402 South One Hundred Eight Street.
The public hearing on item twenty-two begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Kevin White, eleven twenty-six Turner Boulevard.
Isaiah Renner, seven oh seven North Eighty-Six Street.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-two is approved, seven to zero. Item twenty-three, an application to consider a Class I liquor license for Acadian located at 5018 Underwood Avenue.
The public hearing on item twenty-three begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Afternoon, Dan O'Brien, fifty-five one five Howard Street.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Dan, I just wanted to say, welcome to Dundee.
Yeah.
I've been there a couple of times already, it's been great, and it's been packed. Great location in the former Kith and Ken, which I think still has the Kith and Ken on it, right? But that's gonna change sometimes.
I rebranded it for the most part, but I was gonna keep the inside signage, 'cause it's friends and family, it kinda fits what I'm doing.
Okay, great. And this is your second location, you'll maintain the other one at Hundred Fourteenth and Dodge?
That's right.
Great. I look forward to having you there, and I think I'll do great.
All right, thank you.
All right, motion approved.
Second, roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-three is approved, seven to zero. Item twenty-four, to consider an addition application for Emmett Tavern's Class Z liquor license located at 2514 Levinor Street to add an outdoor area approximately sixty-five feet by seven feet to the south.
The public hearing on item twenty-four begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Mark McClellan, forty-eight fifteen Hickory Street.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed, you already have the fence up, I see, right?
Yes, sir.
It looks great. Is there a motion? Second, roll call.
Gray. Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-four is approved, seven to zero. Item twenty-five, to consider an addition application for Brickway Brewing and Distillings Class Z liquor license located at 1116 Jackson Street to add an area approximately thirty-two feet by thirty-eight feet known as 1108 Jackson Street.
The public hearing on item twenty-five begins at this time. Are there any proponents? You might wanna address, I went by to try to get in the other night, it was too crowded, I couldn't do it.
Well, that's good to hear. Hello, President Jerem, City Councilmembers, my name is Zach Treymert, Brickway Brewery Distillery, eleven sixteen Jackson Street. Working on expanding the production side of our business, and I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Treymert. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Gray. Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-five is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the City Council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the City Council Rules of Order.
The public hearings, excuse me, on agenda items twenty-six through thirty-seven were held on November twenty-six, twenty nineteen. Roll call.
Gray. Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items thirty-eight through fifty-five are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item fifty-six, an ordinance to amend multiple sections of Chapter Twenty-three of the Omaha Municipal Code to reflect changes negotiated between the City of Omaha and the Professional Fire Service Manager Association for the years twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two. Personnel Board recommends denial.
Just for the record, the Personnel Board at its meeting had only three members, and two of which voted in favor, and since the ordinance requires three, at least vote in favor, that is why this recommendation is considered a denial. Councilmember Melton, the floor is yours.
Sorry, I was actually going to state that same thing. I just wanted to clarify the denial that they only had three people at their board meeting, and so, two of which-
Thank you. Is there a motion? Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item fifty-six is approved, seven to zero. Item fifty-seven, an ordinance to amend Section Twenty-three dash one seventy-seven of the Omaha Municipal Code to add the employment classification of Chief Pilot Air Support Unit. Personnel Board recommends approval.
The public hearing on item fifty-seven begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item fifty-eight, an ordinance to approve an agreement with Professional Convention Management Association to promote the City of Omaha as a premier destination for conventions and meetings in a total amount of five hundred and seventeen thousand dollars for the period of December one, twenty nineteen, through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two.
The public hearing on item fifty-eight begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item fifty-nine, an ordinance to approve the Fiscal Year Twenty-Nineteen Choice Neighborhoods Planning and Action Grant Award in the amount of one point three million during the project period of September nineteenth, twenty nineteen, to March thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
The public hearing on item fifty-nine begins at this time. Are there any proponents? You hopped down here quickly, didn't you?
Members of the Council, Kelly Johnson Dorsey with the City of Planning Department, and we are exciting to have been awarded another Choice Neighborhoods Implementation Grant. This is a planning grant for South Omaha. About three hundred and fifty thousand will go towards the planning portion of the grant, the other nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars will go towards the action portion. During our planning process, we'll determine what that action is, but we need to start that engagement process to determine what is best. So I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Good afternoon, Cesar Garcia, Southside Redevelopment Corporation, six eighteen South Eleventh Street. The organization I lead as Executive Director is gonna be the quarterback organization working on the revitalization of the Indian Hills, Southside Terrace neighborhood for the next few years. We are working together with the city, our home house in O three, for this grant, and that was awarded recently in September, so here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. Kelly, I just had a couple of questions or maybe comments that you could add on top of. I know this is kind of what we hope is the first step in the Choice Neighborhood Grant process, and, and know that this is kind of how, on a similar process for, on, for North Omaha, the grant that we recently received, that hopefully this is akin to that process as well, correct?
Yes, hopefully this will prepare us nicely for that. So, the grant we received for North Omaha is the Implementation Grant, it's a Choice Neighborhoods Implementation Grant for twenty-five million dollars. Now they're awarding up to thirty-five million dollars. So after we get done with the planning process, we believe we would most likely then apply for an Implementation Grant, and since those are up to thirty-five million dollars now, even better.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the work, and I think it's a great opportunity, as we're seeing the results for North Omaha and South Omaha as well.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I would just add that I'm very supportive of this too, and we've talked about it in the Planning Committee quite a bit, and as Chairman of that committee, I just wanna say, Cesar, that let us know how we can help. This would be a huge boost to South Omaha. If it all resembles the success of Seventy-Five North, it will have been well worth it, and I would consider it a companion project to affordable housing in both North and South Omaha.
Thank you, Councilmember Festerson. One of the things I'll say, we're gonna need the help from everybody here in this room as we go forward, so looking forward to, to working with everybody.
Great.
Thank you.
Now, there's thirty-five million dollars available. That's even better than twenty-five million. [laughing] Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Festerson. Councilmember Vice President Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. To extend on this as well, this is an area that obviously, I won't say has been forgotten about, that is, but is in desperate need of an overhaul. I mean, nobody's not aware of this from different neighborhood associations, Planning Department, and everybody involved, so this is a great first step, and I will definitely be first in line to help you make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and, Mr. Garcia, welcome to your position, congratulations, and the work before you is enormous, but you have a lot of people to lean on for, for support, including the ones who have pioneered the, the trail in, on the north side. Lean on them, and, and please feel free to, to come to us as, as you work through this.
Absolutely, that's, that's one of the things that we're very lucky in the City of Omaha to have two projects like this, one Seventy-Five North leading the efforts, and we following the same model that they're following, the purpose-built community model, that's a proven model being applied in about twenty-five different communities in the country, so, thank you.
Great, good luck to you. Next item.
Item sixty, an ordinance to amend the agreement dated June fifteenth, twenty seventeen, with the State of Nebraska Probation Office, District Four A, for an amended agreement amount of two hundred and ten thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars to fund one domestic violence unit assistant, warrant, sweep, overtime, and training.
The public hearing on item sixty begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item sixty-one, an ordinance to amend the agreement dated June twenty-second, twenty seventeen, with the Women's Center for Advancement for an amended agreement amount of three hundred and nineteen thousand two hundred and twenty dollars to fund two full-time bilingual advocates, supplies, and direct cost and training.
The public hearing on item sixty-one begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item sixty-two, an ordinance to amend the agreement dated October fifth, twenty eighteen, with Tony Jensen for an amended agreement amount of fifteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars for community safety and accountability consultant project management, report writing, and consultant mileage.
The public hearing on item sixty-two begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item sixty-three, an ordinance to approve a memorandum of understanding with the Nebraska Public Employees Group, Local Two Fifty-One, for increased shift differential pay for street maintenance employees assigned to winter shifts for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty winter season.
The public hearing on item sixty-three begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Welcome, Mr. Rousier.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the City Council, Austin Rousier Public Works. Happy to be here today to talk about this, and I appreciate you hearing it for us. This is, this is an item that, after doing quite a bit of soul-searching this year in the street maintenance and public works about our employees and how to better engage them in the performance of their jobs for us, and the diligent work they do every day for street repairs and for snow removal, we, we've gone through a process that, as you're aware, we've had employee engagement surveys, and we've been looking at our programs and our management procedures in-house to find ways that we can better engage our employees. And through, through the help of the HR Department throughout the spring and summer, we do have the results of the survey that was given to the employees about their engagement on the job, and have a number of, of good recommendations that have come back from that, that we have taken to heart, and come up with our action plan moving forward to address some of the issues that our employees have raised about management and about work within the Street Maintenance Division of Public Works. And so, we provided an action plan that, that has come from, from myself and through the department, through the director, and given back to HR our action plan for that. And it addresses a number of items that, that came out of the employee engagement survey. Recruitment was one. We worked closely over the past several months with the HR Department and, and with the, the personnel folks there to come up with a recruitment plan somewhat different from what we've done in the past, and our desire was to keep especially the entry-level positions of Automotive Equipment Operator One open and available for people to apply as often as possible, as, as accessibly as possible, and to streamline the employment process for those folks. So we have, have worked with them to come up with a set schedule of postings, so those will be posted all but about twelve weeks out of each year to keep fresh candidates coming in for those positions. We've also looked at a number of team-building activities, and we've reinstituted our Snow Flower Rodeo, which we had a few weeks back. That was an excellent success and a good team-building activity for our employees to compete. In the jobs that they do, they were able to compete with each other and have some camaraderie, and to get to interact with other people within the division that they don't see on a day-to-day basis. We also have a number of other events that we've attended this year, and we will continue to look for opportunities for those team-building events as we move forward. From a communication standpoint, we have looked for ways to better engage our employees through communicating divisional policies, divisional decisions and also just overarching city and Public Works Department information to our employees that don't have email addresses or availability of typical communications like you would see in a normal office. So we have initiated a newsletter, a printed newsletter that we pass out to our employees and we're working through a schedule for coffee talks, informal sessions where people can come to us with concerns and we can listen and garner feedback and also convey messages about our division and the operation of our division. One of the things that we looked at that was somewhat out of our control was the issue of wages. We heard from a lot of our employees that they didn't feel like wages were within what the market demanded for their position and their qualifications as CDL drivers. And I know that, you know, the city has, through the HR department, we are studying salaries right now and wages and looking at ways to kind of correct that, but one of the things that we thought a little bit outside the box on, and I started conversations with the HR department in the summer, was this issue of shift differential. And one of the things that we consistently hear from Street Maintenance Division employees, if you're not aware, there is a winter shift that the Street Maintenance Division employees go on. That starts by labor agreement with Local 251, that starts the Sunday after Thanksgiving every year and it runs through the Sunday of the springtime change in March. So employees go from a regular summertime 7 to 3:30 shift to where they go into this partial year shift where their regular work hours are either what we call the AM shift, that's a 3:30 to noon shift, or a PM shift that is a noon to 8:30. You can imagine that going in and out of that shift throughout the year is fairly disruptive to an individual and a family's life and requires substantial commitment from those employees that they have to sacrifice a lot of things in life for that. Obviously with some of those, you know, you've got sleep schedules that go back and forth and you've got other issues that come about with, you know, especially if you have school age children in the house or just relations with your spouse and those types of things. And so we looked at a way to kind of compensate from that because one of the things that we heard from employees who left either through transfers or resignations, there was a number of people who felt like that was a difficult hardship on their life to have to year in and year out, go in and out of this winter shift. And so we looked at, you know, that was a contractual item, so working with Mr. Grauman in the HR department, we had talked about the possibility of negotiating in an agreement where we could give them compensation for that through the shift differential. And so this was the proposal that came out of that, that those conversations was looking at a meaningful and substantial addition to the shift differential pay that those employees get who go into that winter shift from Thanksgiving until the springtime change. So this is kind of the culmination of that. We've had a number of discussions with Local 251. There was a vote of their members that passed, so this is coming to you because it's been vetted throughout, Street Maintenance, Public Works, the HR department and Local 251 as well. And I would appreciate your support and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I appreciate that overview. We did talk about this this morning in our in our Public Works Committee meeting and since I've expressed some frustration in this respect in previous meetings, I just wanted to say that I thought the update this morning was good and this afternoon was good in terms of what resembles an action plan to deal with what we observed over a long period of time, which is the shortage of personnel in the AEO one category and especially as it applies to snow plowing and pothole filling and things that are very important for us throughout the year, but especially now and especially as spring comes around. So I'll be supportive of this pay differential increase for them next week. I think that's an important thing to do and I just encourage you to continue with the open postings like you've described and the communication and the events. I think those are team building opportunities as well. But then ultimately a salary study too, which comes due or will have results about when?
I defer to HR.
Okay. Okay. Ongoing work on that and I'm not sure if we have someone prepared to answer that today, but I know it's ongoing and we'll follow up on that too. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vice President Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just to add on that as well, I appreciate you coming up here for that overview, Mr. Rousier. I know that Local 251 has a lot of hardworking employees and that is especially true in street maintenance because it's very demanding. I mean, it's not just showing up Monday through Friday, 7 to 3. The shift really does have a toll. So money's not going to solve everything, but I'm sure it will improve the morale and when you improve the morale, then it increases the productivity. Obviously, the roads, whether it's nice out, filling potholes or whether snow's falling, it's very important to everybody. So I know that this bump in pay will be appreciated by all those that it's affected. And not only that, you probably don't know, but I'm sure we're closing the gap on the difference of openings that we had with the AEO ones and I assume this pay differential will help, or at least I hope it'll help some of those that transfer out because of the demand from the shift differential. So I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, I would just add a couple of comments to this is I think, and I've shared this before and again today with the city's new human resources director, that as a city, we have this constant struggle that public work shares with us in terms of filling these positions for AEO ones. And I think it's in part because of the city's stringent hiring requirements, that the city's set its standards so high as to who's eligible that it's excluding people who could be eligible for this form of employment. We have record populations in our state's prisons for for men and women, many of whom come out, many of whom choose to relocate in a bigger city like Omaha, some of whom are going through reentry programming with success and enlightened employers who are hiring out of these programs. And finding these programs is good resources for producing people who want to be productive citizens who've, you know, paid their fine and done their time and want to move on with their life, but the city excludes this this potential workforce because of our standards. And I just think we need to be looking at policies and procedures for positions such as CDL entry level positions who are plowing and filling potholes and other street maintenance tasks would be a place for the city to serve as a role model for our community, for other employers, to give people a chance who go through reentry programming. So I would just say that again publicly here today to challenge you, Mr. Rousier, to work with our new HR director to pursue that line. No further lights, next item.
Item 64, in ordinance approving a contract with RSM US LLP for an independent annual audit agreement for the fiscal years ending December 31, 2019 to 2023.
The public hearing on item 64 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Kevin Smith with RSM, 1299 Farnham Street, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 65, First Star Fiber Corporation appeals rejection of their bid from October 23rd, 2019 for the OPW 53624 Omaha Recycling Processing Contract, 2021 to 2026.
The public hearing on item 65. I keep I keep calling public hearings on the bid rejections, but I'm assured by the clerk, this is not a public hearing. This is the appellant's opportunity to have the floor. Mr. Goobles, welcome.
Thank you, President Jerem and councilmembers. I want to thank you all for your willingness to consider accepting our bid as presented. And if need be, we would be willing to entertain amendments to make it more mutually acceptable to all parties. And I dare say we would have done that as well had we had the opportunity to meet with the administration to go over that as it vetted our bid. My chief aim here is to call attention to several key factors laid out here in these boards that should convince you that ours was indeed the lowest and best bid. As to being the lowest, that was obviously the case since we were the sole bidder. However, unlike past RFBs, the present RFB included options that clearly were designed to attract more bidders, including the provision that the operations could be located as far as 25 miles from 72nd and Dodge, which would have reached the Sarpy County Transfer Station. It also allowed the recyclables to be reloaded and shipped to be processed outside of Omaha. No other bids were received, however, which should also indicate that no business with any smarts would seek this contract unless it had a reasonable expectation of being profitable. I can assure you, we did not take for granted that others would not bid, especially ones more well financed than us and in possession of other competitive justifications to add recycling to their existing list of services. In hindsight, perhaps we had less to fear than we imagined, but we had no way of knowing that in October. In fact, had we been in possession of the letter that we passed out here for your consideration, we would have seen that your present current hauling contractor sent this letter out to its residents saying that it was going to discontinue offering recycling to its non-Omaha residential customers. Had we known that, we probably would have had one less competitor to worry about. But regardless, one of the things in that letter that was sent to its customers mentions justification for why it didn't bid and perhaps the reason why our bid came in as it did. It points out that commodity prices are 70% less than what they were just two years ago. It goes on to tell our customers, or their customers, our processing fee is why they discontinued to offer recycling collections. Its decision to is exactly what troubled us as we prepared our bid. That is, we feared the city too might decide to stop recycling rather than help us shoulder our risk in this industry. In fact, you may recall I alluded to this concern when I appeared before you back in September. And this dilemma was definitely at the forefront of our mind when preparing our bid and especially because Omaha, unlike communities across the country, it only recently accepted that to process recyclables requires paying a processing fee. Ultimately, we decided we owed it to our 120 employees and President Jerem, I can assure you that many of our employees do come out of some of the programs you mentioned. We owed it to them and their families and our shareholders to protect their interests and we hope that the city would recognize our bid was reasonable, given the expectations laid out in the RFB. I must say I was disappointed that neither Waste Management's letter nor the reports that were widely quoted concerning our bid pointed out that our fee is but a fraction of the cost to provide the convenience of curbside collection services. The fact is, the average household recycles less than a half one ton of recycles per year and given that there are 182,000 plus Omaha households receiving recycling services as well as businesses at the drop off sites, certainly not counting what Waste Management's customers will have to do now, our bid represents under $2 a household per month and more likely less than $1.50 because that estimate is based on current poor market conditions and they do come up and go down a lot. If you're frugal like me, you'll recognize that this is no more than what your coffee costs at gas stations and far less if you patronize Starbucks. I dare say there are few services the city receives that are as economical as our bid. By the way, does anyone find it curious that Waste Management's letter basically announces it's cutting its services in half, but then makes no mention of any reduction in its Some key points that I want to also share with you concerning our bid. Despite the concern that we would be blamed should the city decide to end recycling, we could not afford to bid anything less than what we might provide, that what might provide us a reasonable expectation of profitability. Our banker certainly expects it and no, it actually demands that we show a profit. So yes, our processing fee is $200 as shown here. But what has not received as much attention is that the RFB requires for us to share with the city 6% of projected revenue, which even in these poor market conditions again would lower the city's outlay to no more than $150 per ton. The provision about it being a projected revenue deserves greater attention because of what that really means. The RFB merely describes it as a market index, which fails to recognize it is in fact the aggregate of a questionnaire voluntarily completed by some end markets as to what they expect to pay for their, to obtain their commodities. It's totally unlike the Chicago Board of Trade that reports actual commodity transactions. The market index is published recycling estimates and it should be viewed as such. What that means, as this past year so sadly demonstrated to our company, there are no guarantees the quoted market index prices will be paid out. In fact, if you saw the Omaha World held picture of the mountain of cardboard that accumulated outside our building this year, you saw why these estimates do not necessarily match actual purchase orders. So while the indexes do not necessarily match actual prices that we receive, under the RFB, we however would have been forced to pay the city 60% of a projection regardless whether or not the material is actually sold. In addition, the five-year term itself represents other legitimate concerns. On the plus side, the shorter timeframe recognizes just how risky recycling has become. In fact, the administration acknowledged this when explaining why it chose the limited term, the implication being perhaps both the city and the bidder could be in a better position in five years when prices might improve and thus the fee possibly could be reset. Going back to my point that a reasonable expectation for any bidder should be to make a return on their investment, we had to include a minimum of $30 per ton for these improvements that would be required to deal with the city's growth projections. That had to been recovered within five years for us to be able to cover those costs. The RFB also failed to recognize just how volatile and subject to change recycling has become from year to year. No provision allows for the strong possibility many things might occur over the course of the next six years to drive up the costs even more. For example, if the minimum wage is increased to $15 a ton or an hour, this will increase our costs by over a million dollars per year. For that reason and other likely increases, we knew we had to account for such risks in the cost and thus pricing structure. Another obvious cost that definitely had to be factored in was that the additional capital, as I mentioned, based on a growth potential of 20%, meant that we had to put another $3 million into our business starting two years ago with the expectation that the city would be going to cards. And then on top of that, we need to put in another $3 million to meet the the growth potential. So while a 10-year term would spread the capital expenditures out longer, without provisions to more equitably share unforeseen significant market conditions over an equally long period, we and others would likely think twice whether that level of commitment would indeed be in our best interest. That should also signal to you yet another reason why our bid was the lowest and best bid. The capital cost to establish a facility comparable to ours would run conservatively $20 million to $30 million. To earn an ROI on that level investment would considerably be more than $30 a ton as what we factored into our bid. And by the way, as we notified the city almost a year ago, for us or others to be ready to handle the anticipated increase in volume, work should have begun as early as this past July. I encourage you to keep that in mind should the contract be rebid at this late date and that we also will be challenged to be ready by January 1st, 2021, even if the bid is awarded now. Taking these and other requirements of the RFB under consideration, our conclusion was we could ill afford to bid anything less so as to hope to cover the bulk of the cost to process the city's recyclables. The last point I'd like to make concerns some of these points highlighted in this slide. We have been the city's processor for the last 13 years. Over that time, we provided the city quite a bit of value. We paid the city over $6 million when markets were good. We, as much as anyone else, would like to see markets come back so that we could continue to make those contributions to the city, but those things are outside of our control. So, you know, the bottom line is we have accomplished a lot in spite of some very challenging situations, again, outside of our control. Thus, I respectfully ask, for the sake of Omaha's current and future citizens, you approve our bid. Thank you and I'm happy to try to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Goobles. Are there any other proponents? You can turn away. Are there any opponents? Mr. Tyler, City of Omaha, Public Works. Mr. Tyler, City of Omaha, Public Works.
Jim Tyler, City of Omaha, Public Works. I'm just here to answer any questions that may come up from City Council.
Thank you. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. So I'm quite concerned about the situation we find ourselves in with recycling in general. Having been involved in this one way or another, either in the mayor's office or in the city council over a long period of time, Mr. Goobles was describing, I can recall it when we were receiving payments to do recycling from the processor, and then I can recall when those payments stopped and we started paying them to do it. Then most recently, when we adopted the short-term agreement, I think at $25 a ton, to continue that in the meantime while we did this RFB, to kind of maintain the status quo for this short period of time while we tried to figure out what has been a challenge for lots of different cities, I would say probably all cities right now, given the markets and the change of tone from China and how that's impacted everyone. But I also think there's always going to be changes in the market, probably market fluctuations, there's going to be changes in technology, certain over, certainly over a five-year or 10-year timeframe like we're talking about in this area. So I guess what I'm concerned about, though, is that, I know the mayor wants and has recommended rejection of this bid due to price and how that could impact the 2020 budget. I'm not opposed to that in the respect that what was bid was a five-year contract and not a 10-year contract. A 10-year contract would be something I would prefer. It would also align it with our waste hauling contract we just dealt with, and frankly, give me more peace that we're going to maintain committed to recycling as we know it over 10 years, not just five years. But my caveat is, in no way do I want to jeopardize current service being provided to citizens in this respect, and in no way do I want to compromise the types of materials we're recycling. In other words, reducing those kind of materials when every effort should be made at this point to increase our recycling rates, which by the way are about 11% and not, not good at all. So I'm hopeful our waste hauling contract will assist with that, the way it will be collected in the future, but without a processor, that doesn't do us any good. So I guess my question is to you, Mr. Tyler, and it is, should this bid be rejected, how confident are we, or how committed are we to making sure there is no disruption in service with this processor going forward, realizing that our current agreement allows them to provide through 2020, but only if a price is agreed to in the meantime, right?
That is correct, and, and we received from them prior to this meeting, which we haven't had the time to fully digest and come back with an answer to them, but our first and foremost, what, what we want to do is reject the bid and negotiate in good faith, like we said we would do with First Star Fiber, an agreeable price that would allow for them to continue to process the recycling materials for the duration until we have a new contract in place. We do believe that the number that we received from First Star Fiber, although it be the only number, we believe it is high. We believe a rebid process would allow us to get a better number from someone else or from First Star Fiber, as they have noted a number of things in the current contract that they didn't necessarily agree with.
I think those numbers you're referring to, we have the letters, so I'm not, I'm not talking out of turn here, it's a public document. The RFB was $200 per ton, and what's been recently offered was $143 per ton, correct?
Yeah, and, and to be fair to First Star Fiber and to everyone, that, that $200 a ton does not represent what they're asking for us or what we would be paying. That number, based on what we see as the cost share formula that we have out there, would be closer to about $150 per ton. So we see what they're offering right now is somewhat close to what the bid price they submitted to us.
Okay. So convinced me that we should, in fact, reject this bid today, and your confidence level in consummating a deal in that respect to maintain service in the short term?
I'm committed, I'm committed to that. We, we have some differences in numbers, but I'm committed to working on that with, with Dale and First Star Fiber as a company. The administration's committed to working on that. That is absolutely our first choice, what we want to do to continue service in the short term as we go through the rebid process.
Mr. Goobles, do you want to answer that question as well?
I appreciate the work that the Jim and his staff have put into this, I really do. But I would caution everyone to think that if it goes out to bid again, that, that process doesn't happen overnight. And whether it's we or if someone else now feels that they've seen what the city might entertain, they'd be willing to submit a bid, will they in fact be ready by January of 2021? We're going to be pressed, because the 20% increase, actually, we think is low to begin with, because when other communities have switched over to carts, and we hear this all the time from people, "I stopped recycling after I filled your 18-gallon bin because I thought that's all you wanted." When they're given the opportunity to set out more material, they generally do. And I will see, I would believe that 11% is going to increase substantially that you mentioned, Councilmember. So I, I know that there are probably restraints that you have to live with in terms of negotiating an agreement. However, as I said in my opening remarks, we're prepared to work with the council and with the staff and with the administration to try to get something that will work for this city for the next 10 years or longer, you know? And you're absolutely right, things are going to change in the next 10 years. I've seen it in the last 40 since I've been involved in recycling, and they've changed significantly just within the last five to 10 years. And they're going to change more. What you pick up at the grocery store in packaging isn't anything like what it was when I started in this business, and you're going to see that continually. And you have to have a partner in your processor who is willing to roll with the punches, and we have over the years. We brought to the city's attention a market for about four different resin types that wasn't being collected when this started, and we've saved the city a lot and avoided landfill costs over the years, which, you know, even though those, those materials have never really made us any money.
Yeah, and I agree with that, those comments, and we have appreciated your service over the many years. And I know what you'd like to have us do today is to just accept the bid that's been provided, but tell me your level of commitment to the short term. Are you also, should this not, should this be, should this appeal not be allowed? Are you committed to the short-term prospect that Mr. Tyler was talking about in terms of continuing service until we can kind of get this figured out?
We, we put a price out there that we think is fair. You know, we backed out the, as Jim mentioned, the revenue share in coming up with that. We also backed out, however, what we think is going to be needed in order to be ready for January of 2021, and that does concern me. So we will continue, if we can come to agreement on the term that we submitted, but we're going to be thinking long and hard, quite honestly, about bidding if we're going to be bidding against ourself, and, and that's really what it's going to amount to, because we've signaled to others what our bid should be. I am more confident just how difficult it would be for anyone else to bid at this point against us, but nevertheless, we want to do what's right for the city as well and for our shareholders and our employees.
Okay. And I believe your letter said through, through March, and then an ongoing discussion about the rest of 2020, right?
Yeah, right, and we did that, by the way, on the pricing, because we know that things could change. We know that. But we also went back to the amendment that was passed in October or September, recognizing then that if someone does come in and bid, and outbid us, you know, we, we want to discuss the pricing again, because, you know, we have other opportunities we can pursue as well.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tyler, one more thing for you, too, then I'll yield the floor. So it's December 10th, right? And January 1st is fast approaching, so at the moment, there is no agreement to continue service January 1st, right?
At the mo, at the moment, there is no agreement. We agreed to have a price effective January 1st in, in our addendum, and, and we're committed to that. You know, we received a letter, I believe, last Friday with a number. We just recently sat down internally to discuss that number. We're going to have a response to First Star Fiber within the week, and we're going to sit down and start talking those numbers. And you know, there's, there's a number of things that have been brought up as to, I'm just going to say, there's a, there's a difference of opinion, I'm going to say, between the city and what we see as public works officials on how we should pay in a contract versus what others in the retail market pay. And there's, there's a bit of a difference in the number that he charges other retail customers versus what he's asking for from Omaha. And we understand why he makes a claim for some of those numbers, and one of the things that he's talked about is provisions in the contract that limit his ability to reject contamination. And, and I want to work with you, Dale, on that, because, you know, we look at that contract, and, and we believe there's provisions in there that allow you to reject contamination just the way you do with anyone else, and so we'll do.
In the new.
Yes, in the current, in the current one, and so work with you to make sure you can do that with your current contract and put the burden on the hauler, because, and we'll point out that provision to you to help you narrow the gap between that retail and Omaha. So that's just something I wanted to say, we're, we want to be a willing partner in all of this.
Okay, thank you. And then one last question, and I'm just talking out loud here, but I know we only have one more council meeting this year, which is next week, December 17th. I mean, I guess I'd sure feel better knowing we had that agreement in place before we took action on this item today. That's only one week from now, but I'll just throw that out there as an idea as further conversation happens here.
Anticipating such an inquiry, I asked the clerk if, if we had the ability, if the council so chose to lay this over for a week, and she has checked with law, we do have that flexibility, if that's the will of the body.
Thank you.
Do you, do you have any further comments, Mr. Festerson? Thank you. Councilmember Pauls.
Could I have you, would you bring those setup so I can, because the numbers, you guys are playing with me on the numbers. Yeah, I can see that. What is the, what is the number that you're looking for?
In our bid, we're looking for $200 under the current provisions in the, in the previous RFB. But the cost to the city is less because of the 60% of the.
I'm trying to figure out what that number is then.
Right now, based on current market conditions, it would have lowered it to about 147, something like that, 150.
Okay, so the number I should be thinking about is basically 150?
Correct. And those are, these are some of the worst market conditions I've seen in 30 years.
Right. And so I think sometimes we play with these numbers. I got used to that when we were talking about our trash contract, the numbers that were tossed around there. So I'm a little bit suspect when I hear things from the city on some of these things, to be honest with you. You had a meeting with several of us a while back. You are trying to change your operation, because you showed the little plastic pellets and all that, is that still?
That is correct. You're referring to a process where we would take a lot of the hard-to-recycle plastics and turn it into diesel through a process called pyrolysis. And we believe that represents one of the, the key things that we have brought to the table all these years and want to continue to bring to the city's attention. It'll create jobs, it will overcome one of our major challenges in our industry, and that is the fact that we don't have a lot of end markets right here in the state. This will be an end-market way to process a lot of recyclables that otherwise are going to landfill.
So in turn, if that is successful, more money, then the city potentially will get more money?
Most of these, the way the current RFB is written, no.
Okay.
And the reason for that is, these have previously not even been recyclable.
Okay, okay, okay. So you're, I should think of 150 as what I should be thinking about?
Yeah, I would keep it in that level. Going back just a few years ago, when markets were better, it would have been a lot less.
That's if they want to recycle. Contract in 2021, it should be 150.
Yeah.
Who's the finisher?
Correct. That is, as Hal pointed out, 150 would have been, if that's, market conditions were the same and all of our costs were taken into account based on our bid of 200, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pauls. Councilmember Melton.
Yes, well, I first have a question, don't go anywhere, Mr. Goobles, but I, I have a question, what are our options? Because this is a, an odd case. Normally, when we have bid appeals, it's, you know, the, the lowest bidder who, we rejected it because a form wasn't filed, or potentially because they had done bad work for the city before, so we were looking at lowest and best. Here, we got one, and I know we've, we've thrown them out before. I think it was the Saddle Creek CSO project a number of years ago. It came in so far above the engineer estimate that the city said, forget it, let's wait a couple of years and, and rebid it, maybe when things are, are better. So I know we've done that, but I, I don't believe that that was appealed, so.
That's correct.
What are our options? I mean, this is here on appeal, so if we, I mean, if, if I say I want to do a motion to grant the appeal, that doesn't necessarily mean we've accepted the bid, right? I mean, the city council doesn't have the procedural ability to accept a bid, does it?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney, you're correct. There are a lot of departments always advised on these bid appeals that if you accept the appeal, it still goes back to the department to present something, either the same one or something else, to the council. But this council does not have the ability right here now to accept the bid that's been rejected. It simply goes back to, in this case, Public Works.
Okay, and, and that would be because there's not another bidder. I mean, and potentially, if, if we had, you know, two bidders and we accepted it, then maybe it would go to the appellate, right?
Again, it goes back to Public Works, and a lot of times, they'll send back, you know, another bidder, the second one or something like that.
I see. So in this case, it's not, even if we were, I mean, I just want to make it clear for the people out there that that, we're not voting today on whether or not to accept the bid, because procedurally, we don't have the ability to do that. So maybe if we do, if we agree, and I have no problem agreeing to the layover, because maybe that would help further discussions, you know? And again, Mr. Goobles, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, and you don't necessarily have to answer this question, I don't normally say that to people I ask a question to, but what I'm very concerned about is if there aren't any other processing centers capable of handling the amount of material that Omaha creates, and especially the amount that we will have after the new garbage contract, then there's, and you're telling us there's a chance at this point that you may not even rebid if we rebid the contract, correct?
I definitely would want to see what's in the RFB before I give you a firm commitment on that, because there are so many things that can affect whether or not we achieve our goal, which is to be profitable.
Well, and by the way, that's not a bad thing. I mean, we, we don't expect people to work for free, and we want your employees, over 120 employees, we want them to be able to get paid what they're worth and for the job that they're doing, because it's not a very fun job, put it that way. It's an easy job, that the people that work for you, what they're doing. So, and I have one question, Jim, if you don't mind, kind of goes along the same line, you probably know what I'm going to ask, but if we rebid this and First Star chooses not to rebid, we've done some, we've looked around, and I, before this bid came back, we were assured there, there's more than one recycling processor, I guess is the word I'm looking for. I'm sure we're going to get more than one bid. Well, we didn't, we only got one bid. And Mr. Goobles makes a point, in order to be able to process the amount of material that Omaha creates, is there even a possibility that if another bidder came in from out of state, let's say, which, we've got one right here in the Omaha area, which I like, but if we brought in somebody, would they even have the ability to build a plant to be able to accept that amount of material?
What I would say to that, and I'm going to, that's a couple of questions-
I was, yeah, it was-
Yeah, so, um, the, one thing I would like to state very clearly is that, you know, we have nothing against First Star Fiber and their profitability, you know, that's their job, they're supposed to watch out for that. Our job is to look out for the Omaha taxpayer.
Right.
We saw a price that came in that we did not believe was fair to the taxpayer. So that was our justification for going out for the rebid. We have been in discussion with a number of companies, both on the local, regional, and national level. And in fact, we're meeting with a national representative of recycling from a national company this week, who are interested in seeing the city go through with the rebid because they believe that they can offer better prices than what we were seeing. So we believe, as a public works department, that that number that we have, we can do better. And again, that includes if there's some different terms that First Star Fiber sees, along with a longer contract term, or things that they didn't like with the indices we were using, we are open to making changes within a new contract request for bids that we would put out.
Okay, so the commitment would be that, I mean, you're not just putting out the same bid, you're going to change the terms, which you're required to do, correct?
We are absolutely, we have, since, since the bid process and this whole process has started, we have contacted every one of the companies that did not bid, and we have sought input from them on what, if anything, would they like to see different in a rebid process. And what we heard consistently, although not going in, but, you know, we had mixed, I'm going to say, on the term of the contract, we were given advice from the recycling partnership, who looks at this nationally, that this is not a good time to go out with a long-term contract. At the same time, a large company coming in from out of town needs a long-term contract to, to absorb the capital needs, you know, so those are the type of things we're considering going forward. And yes, we've heard from a majority of the companies that bid and didn't bid, that a long-term contract would be something they would like to see. So we will go out with a 10-year contract, likely with two five-year renewals, like you see with the hauling contract. So that's something we heard. We heard some feedback from the indices that we used, and it's particularly about the paper indices, and so we're interested in making changes to that. I would like to say that the contract terms that we put out there, we use best practices from the industry and look nationally how those contracts, cost-share formulas were developed. So if there are changes we need to make to that, as we put out a better contract to get a better bid for the city, we'll make those changes, but we were very confident in the formula we used.
Now, would, if we laid this over, would that delay what you're doing? Because my concern is, you know, July 1st, 2021 is a year away, essentially. And if we run the risk of not having a processor, there's going to be no point in FCC picking up the covered recyclable carts if we don't have a place to take the material. So it, would a layover by council today delay what you're doing?
I'm, I'm not going to say a layover is going to delay what we're doing. We have been working continuously through this whole process. If we have to rebid, we're working on the rebid. We're working with First Star Fiber on a way to come to terms to keep them working with us through 2020 as that process is going on. So what you do with the next week, I can't see that-
Because essentially, whatever we do today, accept, deny, I mean, actually, our vote really doesn't matter, right? I mean, according to Paul Kratz, and I'd say that just as a matter of fact, correct?
Yeah, I defer to law, but yes, it's, we're not voting on the contract today.
Because we're not voting on the contract today?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Dobbs, is there anything you'd like to add, since you're kind of talking from the back? It might be best to get you on the record.
My esteemed counselor friend, this is an important vote-
Mr. Dobbs.
You have to put your name-
Hal Dobbs.
There you go.
314 North 97th Court, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you.
I'm reluctant to get into this particular hearing for a reason of what the recording of this particular meeting has with respect to litigation that could possibly be considered, because we are the lowest and best. Yeah, we're the only bidder, but we were the lowest and best. So it is not accurate to suggest that there's nothing can be done when you refer it back to Public Works. They could actually come back to First Star Fiber and suggest that once ratified and accepted by the council, subsequent amendments to that contract could be considered. And that's perfectly within the framework of the charter and all the rules and regulations in the law. So there is an important distinction to be made about minimizing what the actions of the council here today are, in my opinion. And, and I want you to answer the other questions, because a 10-year bid doesn't, it might make a $10 difference in somebody's bid, because it would be a transfer station instead of a capital expenditure.
Mr. Goobles, you have the microphone.
Thank you.
Purpose of answering Councilmember Melton's question.
Thank you, I was going to say, thank you, I still-
Yes.
I'm still on.
I agree with Jim that others might be more inclined to bid if they knew that it was a 10-year. We definitely took that in our consideration as well. However, given the timeframe, and I just want to caution the council again, that the only way anyone is, would be able to do that is if they transfer it out of Omaha, because they've got sunk costs in another material recovery facility now.
Right, and that was the point, that, that we don't really have time for somebody to come in and build a processing center to, you're willing to extend and add on to yours-
Right.
-as it goes, but even you are under kind of a time crunch, is that correct?
We are, yeah. And, you know, the 10 years, you know, as we looked at it, and I know what the recycling partnership was probably referring to when they said, now is not a good time to go out for a long-term bid, because if you would have asked us, and actually, we had this conversation, just two years ago, we were prepared to amend our contract without a processing fee, because-
Right.
At the time, you know, it looked like, oh, the markets are going to do well, China's going to be happy with everything we do, but it didn't. I can't tell you what five years is going to bring, even now.
Because in five years, it could be that you don't charge us anything, because the recycling market could come back up, there could be other, I don't know, they're doing research on other ways to recycle, and make diesel fuel, and make all these different things. So what you're saying is, you do a 10-year contract, we're paying, you know, 1.5 million a year, but five years from now, it could be that we could get paid again, but we're going to be stuck in a 10-year contract. So I mean, it's really kind of, it could be bad for either one, depending on how the market went.
Absolutely.
To get into a 10-year plan where the volatility of the market is way too difficult to figure out-
Right.
-who's going to benefit from that?
Yeah.
So-
It truly is.
Five years, might be better to work out some of the volatility in our current-
The only other way to get around that is to have a true profit and loss-sharing type of contract. And I know those are difficult to do, but we've been transparent throughout this.
Right.
We've given the city our financials. And when we gave the city our financials, that was going back to, I want to say, April of this year. Every month, it got worse and worse and worse.
Right. But I understand that, it's very difficult for a city to be able to budget when you have something like that. Of course, we have, we have tax refunds that, that we, right? There are millions of dollars that we have no idea each year what they're going to be, which is similar to that, and costs a lot more. So I do appreciate that, and I appreciate the fact that, yes, we might be able to find a better bid, but now we're talking about changing the terms. So what I don't want is that somehow you took advantage, it sounds to me like, what I don't want to accuse you of taking advantage of a situation or being the only bidder, your, your cost was based upon the terms of the RFP as written, correct?
Correct, yeah, very much so. I mean, if we could have had more involvement, and actually, that came after the bid was out there to ask questions, our concern was, and it was a very valid one, if we give ideas now and the city changes those, we just invited others to bid against us with-
Right, and now you've put out the cost, and you've laid everything out, and you don't have that information from the other bidders who will be given the opportunity to do that.
Right.
Okay, so, you know, at this point, I, nothing further, and I respect your attorney's position at this point with, during an appeal, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. It might be a little cloudy still on whether or not we can really do something here. I, a moment ago, I went over to the city attorney, Mr. Kratz, and asked him, I mean, we, we don't have a bid that's been presented to us to act on, that all, if you will, all bids, even though it was one, were rejected and never brought to us for a consideration, is that correct?
That's correct, that's my understanding. And remember, in a lot of these situations where you have a bid appeal, it'll involve some minor issue, a little mistake here or there, that's really where the bid appeals come into. But here, you're right, there's no bid, no contract, no bid actually submitted.
Right. So I wonder if maybe a week layover doesn't give the ability for further conversation between, what's that? Well, I'll just say then, I'm getting other comments in my ear here, which I respect. Maybe a, a layover of whatever time period might be appropriate. But I just wanted to weigh in a little bit here, too, of conversations that we've had, I've had with Public Works, I've had with you, Dale, and your representatives. And it goes a little bit to when we were talking about paralysis, and I always say, is that pyralysis, right?
Pyralysis.
Not paralysis, pyralysis.
Pyralysis.
You know, it's, it's interesting to me, I don't know why the city feels it needs to be in a position to be cost or profit-sharing with, with our vendors. I mean, it makes it impossible to, to budget. I mean, we don't know if we're going to be receiving money or paying money out. I'd rather, as a city, as a steward of the taxpayers' dollars, know what my costs are going in, and not knowing, and not trying to bet on the come that they're going to be less because I'm a, I'm an investor in whatever that, that industry is. I mean, I, quite frankly, I would have liked to have seen at least an option in the bid package that went out that, that didn't have that cost-sharing component. And as I, I have a few ideas, as I look at your, your board here and, and look at the proposed cost of $143 a ton, I think there's, I think there's definitely a conversation that could be had in whatever layover period we might end up doing here, that maybe we can figure something out. But again, and where we go with another bid or not, if, if we do go with another bid that hits the street at some point, I'd rather, I would like to see a component or one of the options be that there's no cost, or there's no profit sharing on behalf of the city. If you come in and offer service and say, this is what we can do it for, and this is what we're going to charge the city, I hope the markets go crazy for you, and that you're very successful, and your 122 employees go to 240 employees. I mean, that's what we're, we're not, I think what we're here to do is, is provide basic city services to, to the citizens of Omaha at a reasonable price, and if you can make money on that, and you can make more money on it next year, God bless you for it. That's what I'd like to, I would like to see us get out of the, I mean, for God, for gosh sakes, we sit on, you know, the pension board for civilians or fire police, there are limitations as to the kind of investments that we can make. Why are we, why are we out there trying to, to bet on the commodities markets? I'd rather, I'd rather know what our costs are going forward, to the same point of tax refunds, and not knowing what we're, what we're obligated to, to the state for those, those tax refunds from, from, from our, from, I was going to say 775, but-
Well, yeah.
Yeah, they didn't send that back. That's where I'd like to see us. And in the meantime, though, I appreciate your willingness to continue to have conversations as to how we can fill the gap before we get to a long-term contract. So if, if that means that a layover is appropriate, I'd like to continue those conversations.
Thank you, Councilmember Harding. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Tyler, a question for you that I think I know the answer to, but I think it's important that we have, have the administration's position clear on this, to the notion of, well, just adopt the contract or the bid as presented, but then we'll work on it and work on some amendments later to, to change things or maybe reduce the cost. The way I understand it, the mayor's position and your position is that, no, you do not want to do that, and you won't do that.
I don't know if legally we could do that, and I defer to law on the ability to change material terms of contract after the fact.
Okay. Mr. Kratz, do you want to have a crack at that, since it was brought up earlier?
Sure, the answer is, this is Paul Kratz, City Attorney. The answer is no, once you put out a bid, you cannot go back and renegotiate it.
Okay. And whether you can or can't, I understand that the proponents maybe have a different opinion, but that is the city attorney telling us that. And up, up and above that, my understanding of the mayor's position is, she does not want to do that. So then that puts us in a spot where we are today about considering this bid rejection allowance or not, but the powers, the separation of powers being in what they are, the executive holds all the cards in this respect in terms of implementing something or not, we're a legislative body who does not perform that kind of activity. So my point being, I'm going to move to layover this one week, perhaps it might take longer, but I don't think we're going to solve the long-term in that one-week timeframe that we're talking about here. But realizing we don't have any ability to enter into that contract, my main concern, knowing the mayor's position, is the short term, not having that resolved. So I'm not comfortable rejecting a bid until I know that short term is handled, because January 1st is coming very quickly here, and we can't be without service in the meantime. So that's my point and my interest in making that motion, and I'll go ahead and do that.
Thank you, Councilmember Festerson. Councilmember Pauls.
Yeah, I have a question. So we're going to lay it over for a period of time. What does that really gain us? I don't understand what's going to happen.
May I speak to your question, your point?
Go ahead.
If I may, Hal Dobbs. I recall a material change in a contract where you changed the reimbursement on diesel fuel for a current hauler. Very major, costly change to the city, so that they would continue to pick up garbage and yard waste. The contract, as I said a minute ago, for the record, I did not dispute that you couldn't amend this bid, but you could accept this bid and thereafter amend it.
See, that's, that part I, I could buy into. Accept the bid, amend it. Right. Well.
No one else would be prejudiced to harm because they didn't bid.
We have to have a question pending. If there's someone from the audience who's called upon to be recognized, the person should approach the microphone, identify themselves, and then answer the question so that the record is complete. Thank you. Anything else, Councilmember Pauls?
Well, I just, I still don't know for sure. If we extend this for two weeks, what do we really gain? I don't, that part's not clear to me.
Can I go throw in my two cents?
Sure, go ahead.
My thing, I still have lots of questions that I would like to sit and talk about, not on the floor right now, with different people, because I, I still have lots of questions about this being the only bidder, what the options are. And so at least one week, because a lot of things were brought up today that I had thought of or that then I got more questions from, so I think one week would at least assist in that. And, and that's my only, I wanted more than one week, but I'll go with what the council's wish is.
But if we would support, let's say we would support First Star, it, it doesn't really matter. But we are sending a message. Listen to us. That's where the legislative body has some power. Otherwise, you don't. That's why there are two different, the executive branch and the legislative branch. We may not be able to do this, but by our vote could say, hey, listen to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pauls. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I, I think the question, maybe it was Mr. Paul said, what did we accomplish in the week? And, and kind of directed, I think, to Mr. Festerson. And the response was, you know, for, for a short term, to consider the short term. And I would agree with that, and that's one of the reasons I seconded his motion. But also, I, I, because I did, I picked up on, I think, what Mr. Dobbs said earlier about having the ability to accept the contract and then amend it. And then, as Councilmember Melton said, there are a lot of things that have come up today, including that notion, that I think deserves further conversation, maybe not in this forum. And I'm not saying we're trying to do things behind the, the doors, but I think it's, I think there's some things that have been brought up today that, that warrant further investigation, further discussion. And certainly, if that might be a route that could be taken, I'm referring back to what Mr. Dobbs said, then that, those are some of those conversations that we can have in the next week or however long it, it may take. But that's why I would be supportive of, of a layover at this point, so that we can really look at both avenues, a short term and maybe possibly a long-term solution. So that, again, that's why I'll be supportive of, of the layover. If it's one week, great. If it takes us a little more time than that, I'm all for that as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Vice President Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just briefly, because I do assume, well, I shouldn't, but there could be a layover. The one thing we're not talking about here is if First Star Fiber were to come back and rebid this depending on which way this goes, what if the bid's for even more? What if the bid's double? What if there's no other bidders? Then what are our options? I'm certainly not going to be the one to lose recycling on my watch, so then where are we? And I think if, if we're going to delay this, we really need to think about that other option of happening. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I just would add a couple of things to this. I don't, I don't see the harm. Mr. Stor, there's, please be seated. This is, there's not a public hearing here, so.
I'm confused. I thought you called for it.
There is no public hearing on, on a bid rejection appeal.
Well, there's no opponent or opponent on appeals. Appeals are handled like a court hearing, so it's just the witnesses. So the public does not get to add in, does not get to come down to the podium on appeals.
No comments.
No, there aren't any on appeals.
No comments. Sit down and maintain order, or you'll be asked to leave the room.
Don't ask for opponents, then.
The, at the beginning of this bid rejection appeal hearing, the record reflects that the council president inadvertently referred to this as a public hearing, but was corrected by the city clerk and corrected that immediately on the microphone. So the gentleman's out of order. In terms of my, my feelings about what's going on here, I don't see what harm a one-week layover would do in this case, because it, it allows for the continued dialogue between Public Works and, and First Star Fiber. But I, I would say this, that the constituents of my district want a robust recycling program, and they want our city to be a leader in that area and are willing to support that program, and want me to support the program, to continue that, and don't want me to risk losing that, even in a short-term basis. They also feel strongly about, as, as Councilmember Harding did and his constituents, supporting jobs here in Omaha. That's a big deal. You have, you know, over 100 employees, and you're one of those enlightened employers who hires people coming out of the prisons and seeking to, to improve their lives and become taxpayers and not a burden on the system and consumers of tax dollars, and that's You're a person looking to expand your business. And, and, and I'm not sure I'm not speaking just for myself, we want you to expand here in Omaha. We don't want you to look elsewhere. And I don't want a transfer facility built or rented by some company from out of town and then put this stuff on rail to Kansas City or wherever it's going to go, where there's a MRF that can process on a large scale, because we'll lose all those jobs here in Omaha. And we'll lose new and innovative technologies, creating even more jobs here in Omaha through the pyralysis. And I want to be a part of that. In fact, I gave you some leads on some industrial tracks in my district, so the hopes that you would do that. So I, I believe strongly that we have a good partner here in the city who, who was put in a situation by the written bid of now being cast as the villain in this. You, the, the parameters of what went out to bid that was created, and I'm not being critical of Mr. Tyler and Mr. Key in this regard, but what they created was something that set up a high bid with a short-term period, with these hamstringing, market estimating requirements that then require the, the vendor to pay based upon fantasy, not reality. Whether you should do, be paying, and, and I hear what you're saying, and that makes some sense to me too, but to me, there's other things, like, look at the type of, of payment they were supposed to make to the city for the grade of paper that would be sold on the open market, which is above that which they'd ever produce. The, the type of materials they're producing for paper are not even what the city is going to have him pay, it assumed a higher grade. So that's set up for the situation we're in. So to say I'm disappointed that we now face this uncertainty, this risk of interruption, let alone losing the service, losing an employer, losing jobs, losing job expansion, I mean, I don't know how you do it, Mr. Goobles. I don't know why you aren't looking elsewhere. I mean, if I were treated that way, I wouldn't be as, as magnanimous and classy and professional as you maintained yourself throughout this process. I'd kind of have a chip on my shoulder if I were sitting in your position. And I think rightfully so, because at the heart of this is what I believe was the reluctance at the highest levels of this administration to philosophically commit this city to a robust recycling program. And Councilmember Festerson was the first, as I recall, during the debate on the waste hauling contract, to note, wait a minute here, this doesn't make sense to us, or me. Why are we putting out to bid such a long-term waste hauling contract and a, such a short-term recycling contract? And he asked about why, why are we going to get all these recycling bins if we don't even know we're going to have recycling? And pushing for protections to make sure that the, the service and recycling continued. And then the chorus of others and the committee, the Public Works Committee, I think, took up that task. And so that's one reason when I became council president, I want to make sure Councilmember Festerson got put on the Public Works Committee, because I knew that there would be this voice for long-term recycling added to the choir of the others on this council. That, but here's where we are, and we are where we are because of the written document that was put on the street that set this up for the situation that we now find ourselves. And I tend to, to agree that in a week, hopefully, we will know more. But to say that the council's vote to take a position was essentially meaningless, I don't think the city attorney meant to suggest that. Somehow that, if we take a position, if, assuming the motion of layover passes next week in the absence of a deal to, if the will of the body is to approve this award, I agree with Mr. Dobbs. At a minimum, it's the expression of the will of the council to not want to risk a service interruption and a loss of service potentially. And at best, it creates an environment where this can be approved. But you're now in a situation where if this is rejected and this is approved or denied, it goes back on the street and, see you later, First Star Fiber, in comes the big company from out of town who says, put it on a BNSF railcar or a UP railcar and send it to wherever. And where's that leave this company? Where's it leave the taxpayers during the period of interruption? The citizens who, who want to divert from the landfill? What, what does the Public Works say in response? Well, I, I, I know Mr. Tyler, I like Mr. Tyler, Mr. Tyler's a good guy. But saying he's committed, I take him at his word. He wants to try to work it out for you. I do. He's a man of integrity. That doesn't mean, in the end of the day, he rebids us. And we're, we're right where you predict we'll be, within a smidge of where we are, because there's still capital costs, there's still risks, there's still recapitalizing and, and employee increases and all these other things that go into how you bid, which now you've had to put your cards on the table. You know, I, that's further unenviable position to be in. But I think at a minimum, I don't blame you for the price that you submitted to be able to, to have your business not only survive, but have some return on your investment for your shareholders. And considering the, the vast importance of the work it is you're doing and the, you hope to expand into, you know, I, at least for the people in my district, I want to thank you for that and hope that this motion passes and add my strongest possible encouragement to Public Works and the administration that they work through this. There's no further lights. Is there a mo, a roll call on the motion to layover one week?
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
No.
Palermo.
No.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed four to three. Item 66, All Seasons Turf and Tree appeals rejection of their bid from October 23rd, 2019, for the City of Omaha grounds maintenance for rows areas one and three.
With, is there someone here from All Seasons Turf and Tree to present the basis for the appeal of the bid rejection?
Good afternoon. Ryan Brown, 9730 Saratoga Street, Omaha, with All Seasons Turf and Tree.
And what is the basis of your appeal, sir? And the reasons why you believe the appeal should be granted?
Well, so basically, it was just over one form that was omitted. It was a form that was omitted because I basically put in a couple of different bids at the same time, and just when I went back over it, the one for Douglas County, which was for snow removal, did not require this form. This one for the city did and, and has in the past. And so basically, it was just an error on my part. But aside from that, you know, it's a, a form that I submitted just two weeks prior to this. I was engaged in, in business with the City of Omaha for actually this exact same work at the same time. And, and so I believe that if, you know, and, and we've never come out of specs as far as meeting the requirements on that stated, you know, on that contract form, so.
Okay. Is there someone here from the city that wishes to present the, the legal position, even though I suspect we've all, all heard it before? It may be beneficial to you, you to hear what, what the city's position is.
Ryan Wees, Assistant City Attorney. I'll just remind, the City Council of Omaha Municipal Code, Section 10-108, subsection A, which in relevant part states, quote, "All bidders seeking to contract with the city must," or, "Contract with the city bid must complete a responsible contractor form and submit it with bid documents at the time of the bid opening. Failure to submit the responsible contractor form at the time of the bid opening will result in the bid being rejected."
And Mr. Wees, was that noted in a letter to the, to the appellant at the time they were rejected?
I don't know if that specific language was quoted, but I do believe that in the letter it was, the cost for rejection was indicated.
Thank you. What's the pleasure of the council? Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
And Ryan, I, if I could just call you back up real quick, you've sat here for well over three hours waiting for this, and, and, you know, the, the rest of us, we've heard these, these appeals on these bids before, and unfortunately, we have to maintain consistency and everything else. And just today, we approved on our consent agenda an accountant that's from out of town, and there were in-town accountants that have worked with the city for many, many years, works for the city and, well, I think does the county, the, the City of Omaha Douglas County Building Commission, does lots of work. We really like them. They forgot, it's same difference. I mean, they missed a form and their bid got rejected. And so I just want to let you know, we're not singling you out. This happens all the time, and unfortunately, when you forget the form for the city based upon our ordinance, we can't even make an exception for those that we've worked with for a really long time.
You bet. And I did, I did do some research on that to kind of see. It was just something I wanted to go through the process.
Yeah.
You know, so.
No, I appreciate that. I just wanted to take the time to explain it to you, so it just didn't let, you know, we didn't just all of a sudden take a roll call and you felt like, why did I even come down here? Because I, I appreciate it, and, believe me, we've had lots of bidders up here that we would love to make that exception for, because we know they do good work for the city. But we have to follow our own, unfortunately, we have to follow our own ordinances even when it kind of pains us.
Well, and, and my only response to that would be, maybe that's an ordinance that needs to be looked at as far from standpoint of, if this is a new bidder for the city that doesn't already provide work and hasn't already submitted this form, you would, I, I believe that it's required that you would self-report if you were to, say, fall out of your, you know, the conditions that were stated on that and no longer met those requirements.
I know. I, I wish we could, but we got to have the same requirements for every bidder, no matter whether they work for the city or they're new. We just have to, we've got the same requirements, and they've all got to be by ordinance. So I, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm just guess, I'm just guessing what the vote's going to be today. I just wanted to explain the reasons why.
Yeah, no, and.
And thank you for taking the time to come down here and for doing work for our city, and we hope, we hope you'll bid again and not forget a document, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Melton. And I would echo that we've had prominent Omaha companies come in here. Hawkins, many, many millions of dollars contracts made the same oops, and we uniformly apply that rule across the board, and it's no, no negative reflection on you as a businessman. And we encourage you to bid again. What's the second roll call?
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo. Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Non-action items, item 67 through 93, do not require a public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on an agenda for consideration.
Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Non-action items, item 67 through 93, do not require a public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on an agenda for consideration.
Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.